Basically, key points that the commission had identified that they wanted to be transferred over into the new sign regulations, which address content neutrality in terms of how signs are defined and how they're regulated. And so, the department converted the information reporting prepared by the head to the draft letter of recommendation and then added the addendum. And the addendum was critical at the meeting two weeks ago because it identified comments that were received from the city attorney and then the responses from the department applying to the city attorney's comments. And in most instances, as you saw at the meeting two weeks ago, reviewed at the meeting two weeks ago, the city attorney had no objection to many of them. And it's not that the city attorney was necessarily aggressing to the department, but the key point in sign regulations is they're interpretive, they're a little more complex than anything else we deal with here in the zoning ordinance, and probably most important, they're the thing we deal with more often than anything else as well. Because there always seems to be a constant flux in what people interpret as a sign they need, a sign they don't, they've been told they can't see it, they want something they can, et cetera, et cetera, the lighting changes. So we see a lot of it, and just by the fact that we do it on a regular basis and we have to interpret what people submit, the department was in a better position, so to speak, than the city attorney in some regards. So, we presented the draft letter of recommendation and we started to discuss the addendum. It was at that time that there were concerns raised, particularly by a couple of the planning and zoning commission members, that there wasn't, the table wasn't as complete as they had hoped, which was a mistake on my part, and that if you could add citations and do a little bit better job of comparing the apples to the apples and the oranges to the oranges. So tonight, that's the new piece of information that, for the most part, excuse me, is the subject of discussion and the department's presentation. How has the table changed? First and foremost, there is now the code citation associated with the particular sign regulation. So you can go directly to that section in the zoning ordinance and find the information in a much easier manner. Previously, we just did it by title and that wasn't obviously the best approach. The next columns are identical to what you saw two weeks ago in terms of the current sign description, the proposed sign description, the comments, and then the responses, so to speak, to the recommended changes from the city attorney. However, the department thought it appropriate to give you the current language in the zoning ordinance as part of the table and also the proposed language that the city attorney had prepared and the department had reviewed. So, my hope is, is that Mr. Newberry and I were able to kind of capture the direction that the planning and zoning commission requested moved into the table. So, if we've done our job and completed our task, well, we should have everything we need there to understand what exists, what's being proposed, what the department commentary is on it, along with the city attorney, and then how it reads both in current and future form. And so, the first four relate to definitions, and as you can see, the city attorney had no objection to the department's requested changes. And more so than anything, there are two key things that the city of Wildwood did when it revised its sign regulations over the period of time between September 1995 through February 1996. We did away with pylon or pole signs. So, those are the signs that sit much higher relative to grade, next to the roadway, and you see them more in certain older suburban communities and to a certain degree along some of our nearby communities such as Eureka, et cetera. The city of Wildwood almost immediately removed the allows for pylon pole signs and began the amortization process associated with removing existing pole signs. The last of which, if you ever have a trivia quiz, was Larry's town. I was the last to go. So, pole signs are real critical.
That's the one that's, was like a Bud or Bud Light sign?
Bud Lights, they're kind of tilted and been hit by a number of patrons, I think, over the years.
Wasn't because you had too much to drink.
It was just an old sign, got tired, decided to lean over a little.
I hadn't even noticed it was con.
Yeah, it took a while, but they were, they were glad to help us out when we finally got to that point. So, pole signs were real critical, and we would not make any current references in the new regulations because again, we've not allowed them for the last 25 years. The other item is, we were a little concerned about those kind of special signs, balloons, the banners, things along those lines that we prohibited and St. Louis County prohibited prior to Wildwood, be reproduced. And one of the definitions, for example, talked about any sign, balloon, banner that contains text or graphics. And so again, we don't allow those, so we really don't need to define them. And so the idea was, don't introduce something that might lead to additional confusion in the future. Yes, sir?
Is that to address that temporary banners, you can go up such a special sale going down the business?
Well, you...
The gorilla.
What's that?
The gorilla.
Oh, gorilla.
You know, initially, when the Planning and Zoning Commission held one of its many work sessions on this particular matter, we had talked about eliminating temporary signs altogether. It was on the first table or grid sheet the department prepared. It was more of a question, not necessarily a statement that we should. It appears that, obviously, from a business perspective, there are special events, there are grand opens, there are sales, there are things that happen in the life of a business that are unique, unusual, or intriguing, that need to be identified. And so, the department's direction on temporary banners was more selfish, and now I think from the perspective of the department, we're not eliminating them, but I'd like to retain what we did the last time around in ensuring that there's a standard format associated with them, that they're adequately installed so that they don't become something that we look at and it's like, why don't they straighten the sign, and why is it flapping in the wind, or why is it, you know, it's fallen over? And so, when we did the last round of updates to the temporary banner legislation, we addressed all that.
Right, so before the meeting started, we're talking about milk and honey relocating at Table Three. Can, what you're, if I understand you, they can put up a now open sign on a temporary basis?
Yes. In fact, we've kind of addressed, for example, there's been several businesses over the years that they've moved into their space, they started out with a sign design that was not compliant to the city's code and had to kind of start over. But unfortunately, they were about to open for business, so we've allowed temporary banners to kind of substitute a regular hem-lettered sign on the facade for extended period of time. The idea being is, a new business, new location, people are looking for it, they've got to have something. And window signs aren't sufficient enough because they usually are recessed behind the facade and they're just hard to see unless you're on that main drive aisle in front of the center or you're walking along the center's edge. So, I convinced the city attorney, Young, that the definitions as recommended would be acceptable, and I believe he used two words for no objection. Either he's here, I can pick on him. So, those are the four definitions that the department identified that it'd like to modify, not so much because the city attorney had the wrong direction, it's as I explained, just from our past practices, the regulations that we've developed over time, and just the day-to-day interpretation and application. Yes, sir?
Two things, on the temporary sign, it'd be Page Five. At the very bottom, in the proposed language, you have a six. What do you think? Six, doesn't make a lot of sense.
And chair is a paragraph. Thank you.
And then, I'm working, I guess, the back of this thing. So under the lighting requirements under Chapter 415.400, list multiple light sources, but this is for signage, not necessarily parking lot lighting. So, mercury vapor, high-pressure sodium, metal halide, those are all parking lot lights? They're never going to be used in a sign. Fluorescence quartz, incandescence grater, but we, you wanted to add the LED light source as well, but that's not flagged anywhere? Is that what we want to talk about?
Yes. So, what I did is that there's an interrelationship between our sign regulations and to a certain degree, our parking regulations and our outdoor lighting requirements. And as Chair Lee has mentioned, we, I have identified some lighting sources that I have, we'd never find in a sign situation. But what I was trying to do is to give you an understanding that in our outdoor lighting requirements, we define all types of light sources that can be used in the city. The glaring omission is the most popular light source in the world, probably, LEDs, light emitting diodes. Now, Chair Lee has said this and said it multiple times, just because an LED is utilized in a sign, it doesn't mean it's an electronic message board. It doesn't mean that it's going to flash, it doesn't mean it's going to animate, it is just a light source like any other light source. The benefit that derives derived from it, at least from the perspective of Mr. Newberry and I, is they last much longer, they use less energy, and for all intents and purposes, at least from the sign manufacturers that I've talked to, they provide a better light. It's more useful. Thank you.
And, I think within a few years, it may be the only source that's available.
Sure looks like it's heading that direction.
So, Commissioner Low.
On Page Four, second to the last line, we have sayings instead of signs.
Oh, thanks.
And, uh...
I was saying, well...
Huh? Yes. Um, I've read this multiple times and I compliment the group on, I think we have done an excellent job, or the department's done an excellent job, on eliminating content-based decisions and language.
It was more of the city attorney, and I'll give credit where credit is due, I, on the other hand, had the envious job of just picking at it. So, thank you. Compliments appreciated.
Do you want to talk about ARB and then P, the planning commission?
So, in the sign regulations, it's like a lot of things that are crafted, you start with a set of regulations in a collective manner. That was that period of time between September 1995 and February 1996. Then over time, as trends emerged, things changed, we went in and started doing specific changes to the group of sign regulations. And what ends up happening is, is sometimes you identify things consistently across the board, and sometimes you make variations. And so, in our sign regulations, some of the signs come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and action. Some of the signs go to Architectural Review for review and action. And so there's a bit of an inconsistency, and certainly there's an opportunity now to address that inconsistency. And so, Mr. Newberry and I want to make sure that you like it the way it is, knowing that certain signs kind of meet, others go to ARB, and the two never meet. Or, do you, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, want to see all signs for review and action? Or, do you want to send them to Architectural Review Board for review and then take their review and comment and take action? So, I guess what I'm saying is, I want to, I would like to have a little clarity of, what would you prefer? Because really, at the end of the day, it's, I want you to feel comfortable, because we could spend hours and hours and hours talking about good zoning, good site planning, landscaping, lighting, and then if we do something bad with the sign, that's what people will notice, wow, that's an ugly sign out there. So...
Thank you. So, my opinion on this is if we have the ordinance and somebody comes in and it's compliant, we don't really need to discuss it because it's already compliant, but it should go to ARB as part of the building package, which then they can see if it makes sense. All right? And if it, if it, if it triggers a negative response, then maybe it comes back to us because it's either compliant or there's a hardship involved, which then we would have to decide whether it's acceptable or not.
Wouldn't that be the Board of Adjustment if there's a hardship?
Well, it could come back to us, though, that's what the thing is.
So if it's compliant, we just pass on it?
If it's compliant, staff deals with it, but if we want ARB to look at it, they are looking at the building materials and, it's going to be more in Town Center than anywhere else. So, that's a review that's going to happen anyway, and I think that should happen. That's agreeable.
I would, I would think that if, if ARB is looking at the building, the ARB should look at the sign to see how it all, design-wise, fits together.
Well, I don't mean to throw a fly in the ointment here, but let's use Dearburg's Town Center as an example. Dearburg's Town Center knew, I think, of one tenant and one tenant only, for the most part, and that was their supermarket. Other than that, the side envy, subway, I guess, can't think of...
All the Monastery.
Sunny Street Cafe.
Sunny Street Cafe, they all have different sign styles. Now, suffice to say, I'm sure the leasing agent at Dearburg's Town Center knew that they were focusing on these particular businesses to fill the inline retail, but they, they all change. And so, I guess from my perspective, we can take the ARB, the elevations for Dearburg's Town Center, which we did to the ARB, but they may not, that applicant may not know all of the tenants and what their signs are going to be on. So that's why we have a standard template. Again, remember, you get one square foot of sign for one linear foot of facade that's allowed to have a sign placed on. The maximum height is 24 inches, and they have to be individually pinned on their letters, or you do allow a raceway and then you pin the letters onto the raceway. That way you don't have 60 drill holes in the facade if the business leaves and they remove the letters.
Personally, on our buildings, we only allow raceway mounted to avoid having all that holes in the building in there.
And that's smart. I mean, it took us a while to figure it out, but as soon as a couple of businesses over in Schnook's Wildwood Crossing lot, and it looked like, you know, the woodpeckers had, you know, hibernated over there, it's like, oh, we've got to do something different. And everybody's embraced the raceway that we passed. It's like, oh yeah, that's fine. So I guess what I'm saying is, we could, we could say signs are part of the architectural elevations, but we don't have all the information at that stage.
No, but you have the signs that would go to ARB regardless, right?
Certain signs, not all.
Not all, but if it, if it's compliant, I don't see why we would even want to comment on it because to Mr. Young's point, we have to be content neutral, and if the sign's compliant with ordinance, then we don't really need to see it.
I would probably say that's a very appropriate assessment. So, generally speaking, the department of planning reviews and acts upon those signs if they're compliant. The ones that the Architectural Review Board typically sees are the projection signs, like Benedetto's on Main, that went to Architectural Review, Table Three's projection sign, Sandwich Board signs, and then certain signs that, like in the case of B&amp;B Theater, I think we took that to Architectural Review Board because it was going to have such a prominence on that intersection, so to speak. The Planning and Zoning Commission usually sees signs for location. So, again, remember...
That's site plan, though, not the actual sign.
Exactly, exactly.
So we'll see that anyway?
Yes. You'll see those because, again, it's part of the setbacks. For example, in an institutional setting, the way it reads is, "Sign shall adhere to the minimum setbacks," which means typically, a church has their sign 50 feet back from Metro Brighton. If the church needs a PRD for whatever reason, let's say Resource Protection Standard, we as the city then can say, "The sign location is as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission," and those come to you. That's why Wildwood Christian Church is still on our agenda, and others like New Community, Living Word Church, and I believe Fellowship, there's a few of them like that. So, but like I say, there's an inconsistency, and I guess, if you feel confident that if we determine a sign to be compliant and it's seminal, does it mean to go to anyone? If it's not compliant, then as Mr. Coen said, Commissioner Coen, oftentimes that goes to the Board of Adjustment if it's a size or height issue. ARB sees those special signs. So what would you like? What would your, what would you like your own to do?
So, the non-compliant Board of Adjustment signs, I'd like to have go to ARB for comment. And to keep us out of trouble, we should not be looking at signs that are compliant.
Which would eliminate one step that make it a little easier to do business in Wildwood.
Yes, it would be much easier and less litigation.
Right.
If there's a, if there's a development that comes in, Strip Center or whatever, someone, you know, buys a bunch of lots and wants to put a building in, would, would, in Town Center, would the ARB, when they look at the design for the building, would they not look at their sign package also?
Oftentimes, like the case, let's say we're...
It's not there yet.
Wildwood Vision and the dental offices, we knew that the developer of that building had a relationship with the dental office. We weren't sure what was going to follow, and the developer had the dental office as a client, so guess what? He gave all the signage on the front elevation facing Route 100 to the dental office. Well, when they leased the second one, the condition of the lease was, well, we want signage up there too, so they had to remove their signage and we split the signage between the two uses. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that early stage, there's really no clear, there's no clear understanding of the tenants and the particular style of the site. What the Architectural Review Board does look at is to ensure that there is a sign ban. It doesn't need to be a true sign ban like you see at Dearburg's Town Center, but an area on the building that will accommodate a sign.
Sign, okay.
And then we talk about that interrelationship, you know, it's like, does this, does this look like it's a reasonable location? Nine times out of 10 it is because it's six in the street and that's what they want. Now, the bank at our second City Hall site, 183 Plaza Drive, can't remember again...
UNC?
Yes. They've moved their sign around all three corners over time. It's been kind of, they've been, kind of funny actually, they thought, oh, we'll put them here, and they didn't like them there, put them here, and then they put one there. So we've done like four different variations out there. So it's not as straightforward as it sometimes seems.
So, did we decide that if, if it's compliant, it's going to go to Architectural Review Board? Is that what the decision was?
If it's non-compliant.
Only not. Only non-compliant? So if it's compliant, nobody's going to review it?
If it's non-compliant and the applicant's going to seek Board of Adjustment, it'll go to ARB first for comment, and then the Board of Adjustment will receive comments from ARB and then act. In that scenario, the Planning and Zoning Commission has no role, as described. I'm not advocating, I'm just restating it.
Perfect.
Are you looking for anything in the way of motion for that, or?
Why, that'd be great.
You want to do that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll vote on that concept. Commissioner Low?
I'll make that motion using his words.
And I'll second.
Okay, I'll second. Commissioner Simpson will second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
If we could step back, if there's no objection, I would like a motion second in consideration of adding LEDs as a light source, not electronic message boards, not animated signs, not flashing signs.
LED, maybe we should say LED bulbs.
No, it's a light emitting diode. It's just an LED, or you can type it out if you want.
I will.
What about rare earth emitting diodes?
I'm just trying to get the point across it, it's a, it's a light source, not a TV. I have a motion to change to add LEDs. Commissioner Hellfree second by Commissioner Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You have your light emitting diodes.
Many things. Since most everybody's using them now, I would guess it probably makes sense to address it.
I just replaced a couple, a couple lights in my house that use the tiny little halogens that you got to wear rubber gloves to put in, to put, get lights that will use a standard LED now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
I mean, or any other traditional incandescent shaped bulb, but yeah, LEDs were what went in there.
So I have two things I'd like to cover as quickly as possible. The first is, I think the biggest disagreement our city attorney and the department of planning had was information and directional signs. Currently, we call certain signs informational, or information signs, and others directional. If someone of a simple mind is mine, how generic is information? I mean, it covers everything.
Yep.
And direction, you know, it's like, ah, that's pretty straightforward too to me. But the city attorney has identified that there are certain considerations we need to take into account beyond common sense. Sometimes common sense is lost in how things are done.
Do we, do we need to separate the two? Signs a sign?
Yes, yes we do. Because directional signs, at least as I think we'll interpret them, actually provide, they're, they're more numerous. How's that? Because directional signs as described now, in the future, not as described.
Wayfinding.
Yes, they're in parking lots, so you have a large parking lot, you can have multiple signs to get people to different areas of the parking lot. And a good example is Lafayette High School. It's a very large parking lot, 900 spaces, the community college, almost neutral, 800 plus spaces. So you need directional signs in there to get people to the right location for their, whatever. whatever. Information signs typically, there's just one, and we're, and under our current definition, are non-commercial in nature, and they can give historical information about a building, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah.
Well, and I...
You're on the spot.
Well, no, I'm trying to address this because Joe and I have had some communication about this particular issue. And to be honest with you, this is the area that I struggled the most with in preparing revised draft, because I understand the desire for it, I understand the need for it, the concern I have that I just could not figure a way to describe it without saying directional, which you have to read it to understand what kind of sign it is. Ergo, it falls into the category of content-based regulation. Because if you have to read it to know what kind of sign it is, there lies the problem. I made a couple of suggestions in the responses to the department's review of my revisions, and there may be a way to incorporate that into it by looking at the number of signs that are allowed on a particular piece of property because of, you know, the number of curb cuts they have, the number of drives they have therein, something of that nature that would allow, and maybe is done as part of a site plan review, is a determination of the number of signs and the size of the signs and the backside of the print that's allowed on the sign that gets us to where we want to be. But it's worth pointing out that, you know, a lot of this is prompted off of the Supreme Court decision in Reed, that we've talked about to, to a pretty great extent. And in that particular case was about a directional sign. And the court said, well, this sign is directional and defined as such, and that is content-based. And that's why I'm having a hard time getting around that. So, there, and I think there's some concepts, I think there's some ways to do this, it's just how you want to do it, I think, is the question.
And the department appreciates the position the City Attorney has, and if it were to add its red font, it would say, I have no objection to how it's written as, as it stands. It achieves the goal that we have now for those two types of signs. It's just, I guess, doesn't seem like, wow, that's really content-based. But again, the Supreme Court knows what it might not.
I have a question. So, how would we get in trouble with a directional sign that says exit on the parking lot, or entrance?
We haven't yet.
How do you, you know, at some point, you've got to have some traffic, you know, measures, arrows. Otherwise, your site plan doesn't work.
Right. And that's why I'm saying if you could define it by way of size, materials, font size, based upon some objective criteria with the developer of the site, I'd be perfectly comfortable with it. It's the idea of how we're defining them. For example, if someone put a sign that said McDonald's is next door on a church lot, technically, that's a directional sign. Now, you and I logically would say, well, we objected that because that's not what that's meant for, but the Supreme Court says, well, you had to read it to determine that you didn't like it, therein lies the problem. So, I don't know, that's why I'm having difficulty defining the general intention of what we're trying to do.
So, anything with ADA compliance or anything that's traffic signage, we need to have that.
And we, we do allow for that. We do provide in here that any signage that's required by law, which all of that is, is permitted.
So, where do we, I still don't see the hanging up unless we're putting it on highway right away, and that's us as the city.
Well, I think what the City Attorney is saying is, how we define it, so to speak, by size, height, materials, and if we could do it by location, meaning, you know, parking lot signs need to be in the parking lot.
Right.
And so, if we could say that these, I think they're called flat, pole, or monument type, they have to be at certain intersections to be authorized, intersections of two drive aisles, things like that.
I was going to say, in many municipalities, they don't count towards the sign count a curb cut, and they allow entrance and exit provided that it's not in the right of way.
And ours achieves that. We, within a parking lot situation, you can have as many signs as you think is necessary, but they all currently have to have a traffic-related function.
My point was at a curb cut.
Exactly.
So, so the problem here is not the signs per se, it's what we're going to call it.
It's how we describe them, because right now, they are...
It's the name that we give to them.
Right, right. And that's pretty much it. We, we define them as informational and directional, which are either, correct me if I'm wrong, flat or monument signs.
Okay.
So, that creates, so we've got the type of sign, and now what we say, what we have is what those signs say. I'm trying to take away the, what the sign says and say, those types of signs are fine, and if we define them by at the intersection, or at curb cuts, or if it's...
Call it traffic and not direction.
Well, traffic still, you have to read it to know if traffic's a sign.
Okay.
Because we can't big-tape what it says on. We could just say hello, and that would be sufficient.
We just put the, we just put the location on it, so from a site plan review standpoint, the sign can be whatever it is.
Now, we could have, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get the, how do you define it? Because whatever you write, you're going to be creating a definition of a word that's a definition.
Now, we'll say if we have a sign, if we have a requirement in our code that says you have to have a sign that says exit, or you have to have a sign that says entrance, we can require that. That's not regulating their speech. That's a government-required signage, and that's okay. That's a little bit different.
But we, we wouldn't have that unless we did a parking structure or something, one-way track.
How about drive-through?
I don't even have a sign, other than maybe just the drive-through sign.
And maybe that's a government-required sign, which is a permitted sign.
I think we hit on the solution.
Okay. I'll let you come up with a tech.
The last item I had, and I know we're running short on time, the graphics. There, generally speaking, there was no objection if we added a few graphics to all of this. We created, the department many years ago, when Town Center was first kicking on, we created a graphic to help people understand the types of signs and how to calculate square footage, et cetera, et cetera. They're really helpful, and I think most people at sign manufacturers, tenants, all appreciate it, and I'd like to carry that over and through. There's no objection.
Commissioner Low.
Would just suggest, and I'll defer to Mr. Young on this, but that the graphics are content-neutral, and perhaps one way of accomplishing that is to use Latin as an example, as you see in some other things.
I'm not concerned about what the samples say, as long as it's more just for the measurements and location placement of them. And I see that pretty regularly in sign ordinances, in particular, in a new urbanist-type development such as this.
You have to do that, or you'll have me coming here and breaking your rules.
Won't say that till the thought came. That was the major points that the department hoped to identify tonight and have discussions with, thank you. And we have a lot of three minutes before we leave. So, thank you again for coming. We do appreciate it very much. And to the left, we'll talk.
Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Low, second. Commissioner Beatty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you again, we appreciate it. No, thank you.